Coming out, welcome to the Porter County Board of County Commissioners, January 15th, 2019 Board Meeting. Tonight I've asked Commissioner Fleming to open us with the indication and the pledge. If you'd stand.
Let us pray. Our Father, we come this afternoon in your name. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for how you watched over and protect us. We thank you for how you kept us. Father, we pray this day that you'll be with us, watch over and protect us, keep us safe, look over our country. Father, make, bring peace out of confusion, for we need you right now and then we can't get along without you. We pray, God, that you come in the midst of us this day and help us to take care of the business of the county, watch over and bless each and every commissioner, those that are here tonight, because we need you and we know that you are our God. Father, we pray that you bless us, bless our families. Father, we ask these blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes, December 18, 2018, regular scheduled Board Meeting and January 3, 2019, regular scheduled Board Meeting. Have any changes or corrections? Anything that needs to be added?
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. Any discussion on it? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent agenda, you have two through nine. Anybody wishing to pull anything for discussion? Just not, I need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving right along to staff reports. Mr. Harris, you got anything for us?
We've continued to work on everything we were working on before, so we've obviously made some progress. Any questions about that?
Don't have any if they don't have any.
I'll just tell you, because we've had a few questions about a padlock road, which is 122nd, DOT is paying to construct what isn't constructed and repave portion of that. We are waiting to see if DOT is going to come up with a little more money because it was more expensive than the funding that we had in place. So our hope is that they can find some more money and we can get that project underway. We're still working on the MSPU program. We have a conference call tomorrow with Neighbors Gibland and PFM, and I think Mr. Pravat's probably going to attend that as well. We're trying, we've got the, all the dimensions for all of the properties affected, put together now on chart schedules for all the parties that need to evaluate those, participate in that. And we're about to come together with the estimates. I now have estimates that need to be sent out with petitions for the petition process to take its course, and then it'll come back for board consideration and you can decide if you want to continue to proceed with those based on the results of the petitions. And I think several of you have asked me about that process, so that's where we are on that. That's about it.
You have any questions for Mr. Harris?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on in the general business, item number 11 is discuss with possible board action. Final plat approval of Sunrise Hills subdivision. Ron Meeks, zoning and planning director.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, the request you have tonight is for the final plat approval for Sunrise Hills. It's a minor subdivision. The location of the property is in Section 32 and Section 5, Township 2 South, Range 13 East. Location is off of 104th Street. It's on the north side of 104th Street. Size of the subdivision is 10.88 acres in size, contains a total of two lots, one 5.01 acre parcel and one 5.87 acre parcel. This is a minor platted subdivision, so preliminary and final plat is given in one hearing at the same time. The access for the lots will be off of 104th Street, which is an existing paved road, and this requirement meets the subdivision requirements of the Land Development Regulations. Plat has been reviewed for compliance with Chapter 177 Florida statutes and found to be in compliance. Copy of the application, title, opinion is with your agenda packets, and the clerk has been provided the Mylar copy for the chairman's signature if the board so chooses to approve the request. That's all I have for that subdivision. If you have any questions, I'll answer.
Any questions for Mr. Meeks? Hear none, what's the wishes of the board? Move to approve.
Make a motion.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Going on to item 12, discuss with possible board action agreement between the clerk, court, the sheriff, the Board of County Commissioners for the purpose of hiring an IT security employee. All right, we had this on the agenda last time. We had pretty deep discussion on it. It was asked that we pull it for some further review. Is there any further questions or anybody have any, any other discussion they want to dive into?
I'll just say that I had a meeting with Mr. Baker and the sheriff, and Mr. Lonnie was there, and I got brought up his feet on kind of where we're at with it, and I'm in support of it.
All right, anybody else have any, any other questions or anything?
Yes, sir.
All this end, y'all, y'all good with it, do we? Well, you got anything you want to add about it, Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have a motion to approve it?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item 13, discuss with possible board action a portion of 153rd Road, which intersects with County Road 130, yeah, 136. Mr. Harris.
Commissioners, you have an explanation of what's going on out there. There's a farm now on both sides of this short, very short piece of road that's part of the county road network. And Mr. Hill had a conversation with USDA. There's apparently some funding that they're willing to put in to try to control the erosion that's out there, so if we continue to own that road, we wouldn't have to deal with that, send graders out there. What happened when they started farming on both sides was they removed all of the vegetation, then they put an irrigation system in on both sides, and it's created a major problem. But it's a problem that apparently USDA is willing to step into and try to mitigate. So what I would request at this time, unless the board has other ideas, is that we, that the board authorize the improvements to be made out there at USDA's expense. We would have to simply authorize them in writing to do that, but I would reserve the right to evaluate whatever plan they have before any work actually begins.
That was the only question I had for you, was would we have the opportunity, or at least someone in your office have the opportunity to review their plans and make sure that, that we're okay with it?
Yeah. When I went out and spoke to them, basically, they won't touch it without the blessings, you know, of the board, of the county. And what they would do is have the landowner, actually, he would be the one that we would have to work with and through, and the same thing with them. And they would work with him hand in hand and come up with a plan to stop the erosion, to help with the water runoff, et cetera. And then once they came up with something through their engineers, they would resubmit that to Mr. Harris or to the board to look at to move forward.
Y'all have any other questions?
My question is, is this is, as you talked about, the funding of the 2014, the county submitted the road for a request for DOT to pave, that this has nothing to do with that, that submission? This is simply a request by USDA to do something?
No, no, that's just giving you some information on the history out there.
Okay.
That's just a piece of that route.
Okay, so do you know what kind of improvements they're going to make? Because I've got a couple of roads down there, they did the same thing, created sinkholes right and left and everything.
Difference is, you don't have any money.
Yeah.
If you, if you can get, get into a conversation with USDA, you may find some money. That's the issue.
Didn't do anything about it, that's the reason why.
We could fix a lot of problems throughout the county if we had someone else's money. But in this case, thankfully USDA is offering because it is a farm operation out there. So I would, I've got ideas on how they can fix it. I could probably tell them they wouldn't need an engineer, but if, if they want to hire engineers and pay the cost of that, that's okay with us. They ultimately would just bring a plan back to us.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about, is the erosion, is it from the rainwater just itself, or you said vegetation?
It's a combination of.
Combination of both, combination of both. They did a lot of clearing and removing of all the vegetation along the edges of the road, and then a pile of rain this year along with the irrigation.
There was zero vegetation.
I spoke with the landowner a while back, and correct me if I'm wrong, but he's the one that brought USDA to the table, not, not us, or am I wrong on that?
No, he, he had the initial conversation with them. It wasn't us.
It wasn't us. That's what I was getting at with, to kind of address what Mr. Richardson was bringing up, that this wasn't something that we reached out for, we haven't had any issues, it's just a short dead end road.
Yeah, and the road.
The road is.
What's happening is, there's a low area right in the center of it.
Right.
You know, it goes down and comes back up toward the rear of the property, and all this water drains to the middle to a drainage basin.
Yeah.
And they removed every single blade of grass and all the vegetation, it was all sand, so it's all washing down and creating a major problem.
On this map, is that the one that's right in the middle? The one with the little loop on the bottom of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Little short, about half an inch long on the map.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with authorizing them to do it, nobody else does.
Well, at least they, what they work up and get back to us.
I just, if somebody wants to offer that up in a motion.
Yeah, make a motion.
Second.
You want it to come back here for review?
Yeah, I do.
Or just handle it?
Well, it can come to you. It doesn't matter to me, I just want.
Yeah, if you just authorize me to take care of it with them, then we can make that happen. We handle the other permits right away and everything else in our office anyway.
Very good. I got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item 14, discuss with possible board action bid protests associated with construction of County Road 49. County Attorney Jimmy Pravat and Mr. Harris presenting.
I'll just yield county attorney.
Okeydoke. Gentlemen, this item number 14 for the consideration this evening is a report and recommendation of a bid protest committee on the bid protest that was filed by Anderson, Columbia with regard to the County Road 49 widening project out there. What you're going to be doing this, this evening is just a continuing part of the bid protest procedure under our Section 17 that's outlined in the purchasing policies and procedures. The report that's under consideration tonight was previously filed with the board, and if you look in your packet, it was also provided along with documentation that has occurred along in the bid process as well as the protest process. In January, on January 10, I believe it was, the protest committee comprised of Mr. Harris and myself met with representatives of Anderson, Columbia after they timely did file the protest. I'll make a note that the protest committee was only two rather than the three that are required under the procedures, because procedures say that the protest committee should be the county administrator, the county attorney, and the department head. Well, Mr. Harris is the department head for public works, so he got to fill two of those positions on the committee while we were meeting with him. At the protest hearing, we heard a presentation presented by Anderson, Columbia, a statement that was made by their counsel there, and we listened to the facts as they related to it and listened to the demand that they had for relief. The particular demands that they had for relief involved rescinding the award of the bid to the second lowest bidder on this project that we did a couple of meetings ago, and they further demanded that the county relet the project bid on, on the project, on the County Road 49 project. There were really no other witnesses involved, no other testimony other than, you know, with the folks that we met with from Anderson, Columbia. The details of what was kind of presented at the meeting there is also contained in your protest report, and it's in your packet. After we met with them, we had further discussions and questions going back and forth with them, and the decision of the committee was to deny Anderson, Columbia's protest, and we further made a recommendation that we just continue forward with the award of the bid, that we've, and then continue forward with the contracting process, go ahead and get this project underway with the second lowest bidder. Now, I'll note tonight that there are representatives of Anderson, Columbia that happened to be present here tonight, and if they so choose, they will be allowed to present evidence and other testimony to the board tonight for your consideration of the, of the protest and of the protest report, because the only action to be taken tonight by the board is to either accept or reject the decision of the bid protest committee. Understand that? That is, the action is to either accept or reject the action of the protest committee. Okay, before we take it, looking back out there, y'all have something to say tonight? Yes, sir, I figured you would. But before we continue on with that, one of the questions I must ask all of y'all is that has any board member had any contact or been contacted by any, or had any discussion with an employee, agent, representative, or counsel for Anderson, Columbia since the bid opening on December 4, 2018?
No.
Anybody on the board?
I have.
I have not, yes.
Okay. Okay, has any board member received a call or been contacted by another person that's not associated with Anderson, Columbia that was trying to get you to, that were there to speak on their behalf with regard to the award of the bid or the bid itself after December 4, 2018?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, I turn it back to the chairman to allow Anderson, Columbia to make their presentation if they so choose.
All right. It's time for y'all to like to come on up.
And because we're going to have testimony and evidence presented tonight, you will be sworn, and as you approach the podium and speak, if you would identify your self-name, full name, wherever you reside, and who are you representing?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Zeb Cheshire, and I represent Anderson.
Before we get started, Zeb, let me go ahead and swear you in. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening would be the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
And Tony Williams may or may not be speaking, so if you want to swear him in.
Mr. Williams, if you go ahead and raise your hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board this evening would be the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all again, and just procedurally speaking, and I don't want to waste anyone's time, you've got the report generated there in front of you by, by Mr. Harris, and I've had a chance to go through it as well, and I can, if you're familiar with the facts and everything underlying already, I can sort of just respond to the report, or if you'd like me to kind of take it from the top, I could do that as well.
Anybody have any objections, or just him responding to the report?
No.
Okay, well, thank you all. With respect to the report, there, there's a lot in it that I, that I do agree with. I think it does factually recount, in large part, very accurately, the meeting that we had the other day on this subject. But there are a couple of items that I just want to address and clarify in there. Specifically, the report states that ACCI acknowledged the receipt of the missing addenda and thus had actual notice, which well served to remedy the irregularity contrary to its assertion. And as to that, there are a couple of points that I would like to make. The first one has to do with actual notice, and that's sort of a term of art, and generally speaking, the law doesn't recognize email as actual notice unless it is proven that the recipient has opened and read it. And in this case, that would mean that us, the recipient, actually opened and read that email prior to the bid turn in. In this case, that, that did not occur. We do acknowledge that the email was received, but more or less it was lost in the fold of the hundreds of emails that Mr. Williams does receive, and it wasn't recognized until after it was pointed out by the county and after the bids were turned in, that the addenda were actually emailed. So didn't have knowledge of that, so I would say that we did not also have actual notice. The second point as to that statement is with regard to characterizing this as an irregularity that was ultimately remedied by sending out the addenda via email. There's several, several spots in here in the various documents where it's discussed. Page one of the report says that, or excuse me, page one of the bid solicitation says that the Board of County Commissioners reserves the right to reject any and all bids, waive formalities, and re-advertise, and award the bid in the best interest of Swanee County. Page nine, at number 24, states that the county reserves the right to reject any and all, any and/or all quotations, to waive minor discrepancies in the bids for all bidders equally, quotations or specifications when deemed to be in the best interest of the county, and also to purchase any part, all or none, of the material supplies or equipment specified. And then lastly, in the procurement code, Section 112P, again, states the Board of County Commissioners may reject any and all bids or negotiate with the low bidder when it's in the best interest of the county to do so. Board may waive irregularities in any or all formal bids and reserves the right to request and obtain missing or additional information from bidders. And the reason I went through all of those is to say that to characterize the, what happened here, and what happened here was the website that we were looking to that was designated in the bid solicitation that was supposed to contain all three addenda, did not. Everybody knows that. But to characterize that in the report as an irregularity, I think is a little bit misplaced. In any of these documents where an irregularity is discussed, it's discussed in terms of an irregularity that a bidder has with respect to their document. In that case, us, the contractor, we turn something in to you all for consideration, it's got a minor issue with it that isn't prejudicial to anybody, that doesn't cause major heartburn, you all have the option to waive that. There's nothing in here that would allow for, allow this to be characterized, this sort of breakdown in the process or breakdown in the technology with regard to the process as an irregularity that could be waived. Sort of to go back to the root of the issue and the language that we're here about, specifically the document, as you know, says, "All addenda issued in this regard," excuse me, "all addenda issued in regard to this bid will also be available via the NFPS website and will be the sole responsibility of the contractor to obtain." It doesn't say contractor be on the lookout for emails from the county that might have important addenda attached. In fact, there's no mention of emails at all in this document. To me, when I read this document, what it says is that there are some very important documents with relate, with regard to this procurement, the plan, specifications, et cetera, as well as the addenda that are going to be available in two spots, going to be available at the NFPS offices and on the NFPS website. And it's upon us, the contractor, to go out and check those various places where they might be located, where they are located, and to obtain those. Doesn't say anything about being on the lookout for supplemental emails or that these items may even be delivered by email. And also in the report, again, I mentioned that the, the issue was supposedly remedied by the email being sent. I think that's, that, that wasn't effective, clearly. If it were truly remedied, you wouldn't have us standing here in front of you today. We are a bidder who was legitimately harmed by this issue. Again, I think the fact that we're here demonstrates that it was not minor. Fact that our base bid was nearly $110,000 lower than the second place bidder shows that the county is not getting the best deal for the taxpayers if it were to proceed forward in this way. The written report further states that the rejection of all bids would not be consistent with the fundamental purposes of the county policies and would erode the foundation of county vendor relationships. To me, common sense would tell you that having a qualified contractor perform the work at the best price is a fundamental purpose, and the type of scenario that we're dealing with here today is exactly the type of scenario envisioned when the county reserved to itself the right to rebid the project if there's an issue such as this. That doesn't erode the foundation of county vendor relationships, and to me, the most harmful sort of erosion to the foundation of county vendor relationships would be to not rectify this situation by rebidding the project. Certainly that's what we're asking you to do here. Anybody have anything to add?
Yeah, real quick, I'm pretty straightforward.
Please identify yourself for the record up there.
Tony Williams, Vice President for Anderson, Columbia.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, in short, what happened here is the bid solicitation plainly says that the addenda would be available on the website. Normal practice for Anderson, Columbia is on the day of bidding the job, that Friday, which the job turned in on that Friday, we look on that website. If there's any addenda on that, we pull them down, we acknowledge them. There was one addenda on the website, there's no question about that, everybody agrees with that. We submitted that addendum with our bid. Then we were told when the bid was opened, there was two addenda that wasn't on the website. Now, your bid solicitation says it to be there, and it wasn't. It's that plain.
That was pretty much all I have, unless anybody has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer.
Do you have anything, Mr. Pravat?
I'm just going to suggest that if you had any questions for Mr. Cheshire or for Mr. Williams, this would be the time to, to do it.
I got a question for you, Mr. Cheshire. Are you saying Anderson's position is right now, they're, they don't want to be awarded the job, they want it to be rebid?
Well, don't get me wrong, I'd love to be awarded the job, but.
I'm saying with the circumstances that surround the issue.
Yes, sir, essentially that's it. When I went over those issue, or the circumstances that are appropriate for waiving minor irregularities, I understand that this, those addenda did add additional scope of work. Accordingly, we didn't submit a bid for those, or I guess it's just one scope of work, so yeah, I didn't, I think I thought it might be a little disingenuous to ask that that be characterized as a minor irregularity.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. You said earlier, I think we started out, that emailing wasn't a good means of communication because of the overload of emails you guys get, and I understand that, I'm sure there's a ton of them, but I guess, how do you, how do y'all normally communicate with our staff?
We just informally communicate with your staff? We do.
Well, on something like this, I mean, is it?
Well, I mean, with something like this, it's, like Tony said, it's his practice. He's not looking for important documents in those emails. There may be an email that he needs to get to and respond to eventually, but maybe not one that he's looked at and thought, in this case, he hadn't even looked at it, but not one that has jumped out and said, "This is an important document that you must recognize in order to turn in your bid." So I guess as a matter of course, we do communicate via email.
Right.
But in this instance, he was not specifically looking out for those. He was more worried about getting his items in order for the bid itself to turn in and to do what we always do, which is check the website and see if we've acknowledged everything.
Mr. Harris, I have two questions.
Yes, sir, please.
This is, is in addition to that, this is a very similar process that the DOT also uses. The department has a website that you go on to and you download all your bid documents. On that same website, they put all their addenda, everything that's related to that job, and you're responsible to go in and make sure you've got everything when you bid that job. Now, this bid solicitation read basically the same way. So I mean, we were dependent, that we, when we went to this website, as the bid solicitation said, that's where it would be. Okay? And it wasn't. Now. Now, sure, in addition to the department, we get emails from FTBA, the Florida Transportation Builders Association. And sometimes they'll have addendums from the DOT, and I mean, but I usually don't pay a lot of attention to that because my last check before I submit a bid is going to the website and confirming the addendums. Okay?
Just to add one little bit to that, we have taken steps since then to, within our IT process, to try to make these more obvious in the event that this should happen again. Certainly, we're not trying, we're never trying to sandbag and look at the email, open it, and then say, "Hey, you guys, we didn't get it, technicality, we got you." You know, if we saw it and had read it, we would have acknowledged it.
My question, Mr. Williams...
Yes, sir.
My question to Mr. Williams. I heard you say that apparently everything that you felt like you needed for the job or for the bid was not in that package.
It was not on the website that the notice, that the bidder's instructions said it would be on. No, sir, it was not.
On whose behalf?
On North Florida Professional Services. And I don't think, there's no argument there. I mean, I confirmed with them that Monday after the fact, when I was told that we didn't, had not acknowledged those, I called them and confirmed that, in fact, that they was not, that their website was having problems. And so I think myself and everyone agrees that they definitely weren't there.
Mr. Williams, as part of the process too, did you check directly with North Florida Professional Services to see if another addendum besides item number one had been put out?
I did Monday after Mr....
After the process?
Yes, sir.
But not before?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Yes, sir.
For counsel. Did we know when the date came? Do we have a way of checking to make sure that the addendums are, and everything's out for the bid process is on their site before that time closes?
Mr. Richard, that wouldn't be a question I could answer. We have a representative from North Florida Professional Services here.
I can answer that question.
Okay.
If your question is, do we have a way to check it? Sure, we could go to their website ourselves and check it. But we don't. We don't go to their website. And quite frankly, the email that was sent wasn't because we thought about their website not showing it. We sent the email because we thought that it was a more direct connection to get to every bidder. If you look at the emails, you can see that was a blanket email that went out. It went to everyone who'd picked up the packets. So we didn't have any knowledge at the time that the two addendums were not on their website at that time.
And these emails all went out. The first one went out for addendum number one on November the 8th. Is that correct? Dated on the email, is that what we got?
Yeah, whatever the date is on there.
And then addendum number two and addendum number three went out on the 27th and 28th. And when was the bid process closed?
December 4th.
December the 4th. So is that regular practice that we would send the addendums out by email? Is that what you're saying?
The reason we did it was because I hate bidding anything during the holidays. And I was trying my best to make sure that everyone got the addendum. So we did more than we would typically do. That more than we would typically do was actually sending emails to everyone that had picked up packets because we knew who had picked up the packets at that point.
Do you have any...
Yes, sir.
Only thing I'd like to add to it is I think all of us have acknowledged that we're in a bad situation. It don't matter what happens here tonight. The only thing I will say is I was elected to represent people of Swannie County and save them money if I could do it. And that's part of my job. They're $110,000 lower. If they would have turned in everything, some of the numbers were shown to be about $80,000. If the job, if it got pulled and rebid, obviously, I feel like it would be a little less. So that's the only thing I really got to add to it is it's about the taxpayers at the end of the day.
Mr. Chairman, my concern over any of that would be the flip side. If we rebid it, we're removing an award, and would we be in an awkward position with...
Could we be sued by the other? That's a great question.
Yeah, could we be sued by the other company?
If I might address that, as part of the protest process, the next step after you make a decision tonight whether to reject or accept the decision, the next step in the process would be the aggrieved party, Anderson Columbia, would then have the right to file for certiorari in the Third Judicial Circuit Court right here. That would be their next step.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if you will, I think if I understood what Commissioner Richardson was asking, would it put us in a position with other people who bid, had put bids, and did pick up those additional addendums?
Potential maybe at that time that they, you know, filed an additional protest, you know, with regard to it because they have not been aggrieved by this point. I guess the third bidder would be out, but the second bidder may have the opportunity to do that. And we'd go through the same quick process, you know, hopefully as quick as we were able to cooperatively do with them, you know, to get it, you know, done. So...
One more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Stapleton mentioned this, and I just want to clear it up. With the addendums, instead of it being $110,000 roughly difference between the bids, it would have been about $80,000. Is that quite, is that...
Let me clarify, let me clarify that for just a moment. The bid submitted by Anderson Columbia was $110,000 less. But it did not contain that one pay item. If you assume, looking at the bid of the next party, it was a smaller item, and the bid submitted by the other party was around $20,000. So we make, and they're making the assumption that, you know, that what that difference would be there as a result. We don't know what their bid was because we never got a figure. But it's just an assumption. And it was a smaller bid item.
Okay. Thank you, that clarifies it.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Any discussion amongst the board on what they want to do?
Well, I tend to agree with Commissioner Stapleton about saving money. I think that we ought to be saving the county taxpayers as much as possible. And I think there ought to be, obviously, fairness all across the board in this. If this issue was a, an error that no one could help, I mean, if it was a technical issue, that we ought to have enough leniency in there for those types of things where we can work with that. So, but to be honest with you, I know about as much about this process as, well, about most of anything else. So I don't know a lot about it. So I'm just here to try to make a fair decision based upon the information that's provided. That's all I can do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I speak to the dilemma that we faced in the committee meeting?
Yes, sir.
Which I spoke to in the committee meeting as well. This is a dilemma, and I don't like being in this situation. And I like doing projects with Anderson Columbia. They've done a lot of projects for us. But this really puts your staff in a bind as well when we have this type of situation for this reason. We have to evaluate this type of thing and think, okay, we have to try to approach this with a decision that can be applied uniformly to everyone going forward. So here's a problem that we run into, and I shared this in the committee meeting. If Anderson Columbia had been the company that was $110,000 higher, that had submitted to all of the requests that we sent out and submitted on this pay item as well that we're talking about, and the other company had been the lowest bid and did not include those two addenda that went out, and we were considering awarding to this other company, Anderson would protest. They would protest. They would say the other company didn't respond to those other two addendum. And that's just the thing that we have to wrestle with. The Board awarded the project to the company the lowest price between the other two companies that actually responded to all of the addenda that went out. And we acknowledged that this information wasn't on North Florida's website. It just wasn't there. And we didn't know that at the time, that it was still out for bid. I didn't know it until after the deadline, everything had opened, and we had actually awarded things. So we have to consider that when we're dealing with this type of thing, and that's what we were dealing with when we went into that committee meeting. The other thing that we have to wrestle with is this. If we approach bids and say if a company in the future doesn't respond to one or two or three additional addenda that went out, and there's a technical glitch somewhere that causes that with someone else's website, if our decision is that we throw everything out and rebid it if that occurs, we create a recipe for having all the bids thrown out in the future. Because if a glitch occurs, then the standard is, and the courts with other cases, it's called case law, but the standard then becomes it's going to get thrown out, and it's going to be rebid. And if the Board decides to do that, it's okay. But we can't do that. Okay? The Commissioners need to do that and set the policy. That's your job to set the policy. But I just want to share with you some of the things that we have to consider sitting on a committee considering a bid protest. Ultimately, it has to come back to you, the policymakers, and y'all make the decision. And that makes it easier on Mr. Pravat and I. But anyway, I just want to share that with you.
May I briefly respond?
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess I would respond to what Mr. Harris just said by, this scenario is exactly what your ability to throw out the bids and relit the project is for. It's for if there's a problem that arises in the process. And so, yeah, I mean, I think that is the correct assessment. In terms of if the shoe were on the other foot, or if we were in the position of the second place bidder, we would be here doing this, I don't think that's necessarily fair. We evaluate every bid protest or every opportunity to protest on a case-by-case basis. And I could not here today without meeting everybody on my side and after having, unless having all those facts in front of me and say that we would or we would not protest. And beyond that, the most important thing to remember with regard to that is that is not what is before you here today. What is before you here today is a situation where it's been acknowledged that there was a glitch or a breakdown process. It's been acknowledged that we were aggrieved and harmed by that. If the Board ultimately agrees and does relit the project, of course, nobody can say what the other bidder's going to do, and I know you've got a county attorney here to advise you, but you've got very strong language in these documents saying, "We reserve the right to do all of these things, including to reject the bids and to relit the project." So I think you've got that latitude to do it in the event that should arise, hypothetically speaking. Tony, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I totally, I mean, I agree 100% with most of what Mr. Harris said. You know, that's exactly, that's exactly what this process is for. There's a situation where the bid document said one thing, and it didn't happen. I mean, we were not permitted to bid the same job that the other bidders were permitted to bid. Now, there was an email that went out, but that's not what the document said would happen. We did not get that email or open the email until subsequent to the, after I was informed. I mean, I had no reason, guys, if I'd have had to email and open it, knowing there was an addendum, I had no reason not to acknowledge the addendums.
I'd just like to respond to what Mr. Harris said, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the day, I mean, I fully support staff and especially Mr. Harris and legal counsel for studying these issues. The only thing I will follow up with is what Mr. Harris addressed a minute ago, and that is that we acknowledged that it wasn't on the website. And it basically says that all addenda issued in regard to the bid will be available on the website. So at the end of the day, it gives us the choice.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chairman, as you will...
Yes, sir.
And I agree with everything Commissioner Stapleton's saying, but I'm just sitting here running all the scenarios through my head. I don't think we can win either way. I mean, if we, if we choose to rebid this thing, I just see this other company here feeling the same way you guys feel, as strongly about it, and probably doing the same thing you guys are doing. You know, and for us as a board and taxpayers, I don't know. I just, I could see this could go either way.
I see it can go either way, and I see that we, you know, it's an unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in. You got one bidder that did not receive the information, but they did. But they didn't receive it in a manner that they feel is fair. But you have two other companies that did receive it in the same manner in which they received it, that did complete the bids. So if you, if we rebid it, we're essentially telling these two companies, well, you did submit it correctly.
Mr. Chairman.
Going back out, let me finish, I'll let y'all talk. And then we're gonna go...
Okay.
Back and redo it. I just, and I think if we go back out and rebid it, we got to go back through the bid process. We have to go and then potentially have a protest from the other company. It just continues to extend this project out further and further and further down to where the next step in the process is that it will go before a judge, and I think that's the quickest remedy for the situation. And it's, it may be in the situation that we currently have, maybe the fairest for all parties involved. Mr. Stapleton.
I was just gonna, a comment you made that they received the information. You said they received the information.
Well, everybody was issued, under the same manner was an email. I mean, all three companies were emailed.
But that's not how we sent it out.
I understand.
Okay.
I just... But you still can't look past the fact that you had three companies applying, two out of three, applied to three addendums. That's all I'm saying. I'm not advocating for one company over the other. I just, I look at the integrity of our bid process, and you damage it either way, I think you go. We've got...
Double-edged sword.
Yeah, you got one protest, do we go for another protest? And then when that one comes, then what?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
According to North Florida Professional Services, this issue with their website involves an issue where one day the addendums would show up, and the other day the addendum wouldn't show up, the addendums wouldn't show up. And that's out of our control. So I have a tendency to agree, at least in spirit, with Mr. Stapleton because if I were that company, there's a legal process by which we get this information out to them. And that legal process involves the, involves the engineer's website. And if that legal process is not upheld, then are we going to hold our, the companies that put in bids, are we going to hold them responsible for not meeting that legal process? On top of that, if we, and this is a major concern, we have a local company here that does a lot of work and bids a lot, and I personally don't want to put them in a position of questioning whether or not, since we're not going to deal with our bid process in a fair way, at least from their perspective, they're going to put in another bid for us in the future. So I'm not doing that just for that reason at all. The only, the only reason why I feel the way I feel is because there are... The only, the only reason why I feel the way I feel is because there are situations that are out of our control, and we ought to be willing to sit back and say, hey, listen, if they're out of our control, then maybe we need to just go ahead and rebid the process, or redo the process again. And I know the precedence is what I'm concerned about. If we make a decision here today, have we set a precedent for the future? Every time there's a glitch, we have to make the same exact decision? Or is it just when you guys have to make that decision that it sets the precedent? That's, that's my question on it. I don't want to take us down a rabbit hole, but it seems like either way we go, we're going down a rabbit hole. And I don't know if there's a way out of it. I don't know if that made any sense, but. Kind of. Okay. I'll shut up while it makes a little sense.
It's a 50-50.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now you know how my mind works.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that we've tried to move this thing along as fast as we could. I mean, I think Mr. Williams would have to agree. I've talked to him on the telephone and gone back and forth trying to move this, and they moved pretty quick trying to facilitate as well to get this protest up to this point. You know, I don't know where you're going to go from here. I don't necessarily, I don't disagree with what the chairman said, though. I don't know, Mr. Pravat might be able to help us on the amount of time that it would take for it to go before a judge, if a judge ultimately has to make the decision. But what type of timeframe do you think a judge could consider this thing? Is that a long, drawn-out process? I'd like to get the project started. I mean, ultimately, I want the road built.
That's what I want.
So do I.
And, well.
Can you make comments?
After board discussion is, and testimonies over with, if there's time, if there's room, I mean, if public has comments, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pravat, sorry.
Okay. From a standpoint, I'll look to Mr. Cheshire on some of this, because he would be the one that would actually be filing the, the action in there. But typically, when you file an action in Circuit Court for certiorari review, from the date of the filing, there would be 20 days for the county to respond. I would hopefully, between now and then, Mr. Cheshire and I could have come up with an agreed set of facts to maybe shorten some of the time. But we don't have control of the court's calendar. I know myself, I'm setting hearings, you know, right now that are in June because of what the courts, how busy they are.
That was a lot of help.
That's what I was saying.
The process that goes back and forth, we, they file a complaint, we have to respond within 20 days. 20 days, then after that period of time, the action would be technically at issue, and then we could move to set a hearing. We'd file the typical motion to set the hearing, but I'm aware, dealing with the court's calendar, because it's here locally, that the court is not, doesn't have hearing times available unless somehow we could agree that it'd be an emergency and he could fit it in somehow on his calendar. But the things that I'm having set right now are being set out in June. The process at a minimum, you know, just back and forth would be a 60-day process if we could, you know, push it through as best we could. But I would expect it to be longer.
Well, I think that, like in the committee, most of us agree on the facts of what has actually occurred up to this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Pretty quick. Got a question for counsel. So you're saying if, if we don't agree with them and they choose to take it to the next step.
Yes, sir.
On their side, what does that do with the, you're saying, I mean, everybody's saying they want to move the project along, but if they have something filed, does that stop us from doing anything with this project until that is satisfied?
Yes, sir. Under our bid process, we hold in abeyance. As soon as they filed the protests that they had here, we notified the second lowest bidder of the protest process. And although we've awarded it, we do not have a contract, you know, with them.
Right.
At this particular point. And we notified them of the protest and told them that as we worked through the process, what the decision would be, we would get back to them. But our regulations say that during the process, the contracting of the, of the job is held in abeyance.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question to counsel. You're saying that this process could go to, until June and probably farther. What if, what if the other party want to do a protest also? Could that also extend on the other side?
Yeah.
Just going backwards?
Yes, sir. I mean, from the standpoint that, you know, as soon as we notify them, assuming that you decided the other way, that is to not take the committee's recommendation and to go ahead and rebid, the first thing I would ask you to do immediately after that would be to rescind your action in awarding the contract, you know, to them. At that point, because they had been awarded it, they would then become an aggrieved party under the rules, and they could file the protest. And then we'd be going through the same process that we've now done with Anderson Columbia to its completion.
Next year.
Assuming that they did it. I mean, they, they may not file a protest, and they may go on about it and just rebid, but I'm, you're asking me to look at worst-case scenarios.
Well, you have to. When's the, is there a deadline on this grant?
There's a deadline, but I don't.
When is it, Speaker? December 31st.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I think it's just to counsel and Mr. Harris. Obviously, I've never had to go through something like this. I've made, you know, deals in the past, obviously deals with my wife that never worked out just right, but I'm just, the, the, the deal's out there, I guess. What's it do to the integrity of the bid? I mean, when I say that, I mean, numbers are out there, things are out there. I mean, what does that do moving forward if we was to decide to rebid this thing? I mean, because I don't know how all that works, I mean.
Well, I think you've answered the question. I mean, I don't have any idea any more than anyone else does here today.
Has it happened before?
What will happen.
Is this?
Everyone's numbers are out there today.
Okay.
So.
We've all been involved in protests and rebids.
Okay.
In the process. My experience has generally been that you don't know what's going to happen. If you go back out for the rebid, you could get no bids. You could get a bid, a single bid. You just, you just really don't know.
I think I could promise you, you get a bid.
I'm going to get a bid. We're going to get a bid, okay? You know, but, but you don't know what type of other, you know, participation that you would get.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One question. Debbie had mentioned December 31st. Is that the job has to be completed by December 31st?
What's the timeline? Was there a start and end date on the project? I'm sure there was.
No, there was just a time period that was.
A time period, okay.
Time period.
What's that, within the contract that would be awarded, would be the timeframe, that completion date typically?
We now require essentially a calendar be approved by the county before we enter, enter, execute, or actually before we issue the notice to proceed. We have to have a calendar that meets the requirements of the contract, which would, it would have to meet the completion date.
Sure. I mean, no one's questioning the ability and the quality of work that you guys do and have done and provided for us. It's just a catch-22 for me sitting up here. It's like, what do we do? I mean, I just, I see you guys are obviously protesting the process, and I just feel like that there's a good chance, like you, one of y'all said, it may even get held up longer if we rebid it and it goes to someone other than the company that has it at the moment? Or they may even protest it just because we decided to rebid it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
I feel the same way, I mean.
Yeah, either way, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's, I mean.
It's a peculiar situation where it's a crazy situation.
We made that comment to start with, it was a no-win. I mean, it's just a difficult position.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question for Mr. Harris. If we lose this, if we run out of time and we don't get this, for this grant money, how, I mean, we don't know how difficult it is right now to get anything from.
Listen, I go to DOT and I say, "Look, we need an extension of time."
Okay.
You can bet that's where we'll be.
Sounds like it.
But, but.
And see, DOT is actually involved in this process already, because we had already informed them of what was going on before the board ever awarded the bid. So they were aware of everything that you're aware of now. And they, they have to sign off and just concur with our award of a bid, which they did.
You said before they, we awarded the bid.
Before the county commission did, yeah.
Okay. But we, we knew about this, when we awarded the bid, we awarded the bid after we already knew that something was, was amiss on the website?
Yes.
Because I remember we talked about it. I guess I didn't, we didn't understand the issue, I don't know. We'd understood the issue a little bit more. I don't know. Here's, here's where I'm at on this. You know, I agree with Mr. Stapleton, or Commissioner Stapleton, about, about this, and I see the fairness involved in it, but I also see grant money going down the toilet that because this thing keeps on getting put out further and further and further, and, you know, this, this, this road is in desperate need of being rebuilt, period. And we've got to get this job started one way or the other. So, I mean, why did you have to put us in this situation? No, I'm just kidding. Why we awarded the bid, that's the question, is why we awarded the bid, no one else?
Well, we awarded the bid, and now we have a decision to make. And if no one has any other discussion amongst the board or for, do y'all have anything else to add?
Just add one, one very brief last thing, and I appreciate the position that you're all in. I'm not sitting in your chair and having to look at a crystal ball and try to guess what's going to happen. But I would ask that you, to me, when you do have a multitude of possibilities, it makes the most sense to me to make a decision based on what is currently in front of you, not what may or may not occur. It's my position, and I'm not your county attorney. I think this is the fastest process, honestly. I know clearly I'm biased, but I think you, you get to an ultimate resolution this way quicker than, than any other. But in closing, I would just like to say, I appreciate all your consideration, but I would ask that you decide tonight, based on what is actually in front of you and the facts that you've been considering here, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you.
Mr. Williams, did you have anything? Some public had some comments to make, Ms. Hancock.
Oh, Hancock, Wiggins Road in Swanee County. Just a couple of things. A task order was issued to North Florida to prepare the bid documents and the handle of the bidding and all of that, correct?
Correct.
And as part of that task order in the bidding process, it was to be on their website for the addendums and things. It was their responsibility. It was not the county's, not taxpayers'. It was their responsibility, and we paid, or I assume we have paid part of that task order. They're the ones that are at fault. They have, or should have, arrows in emissions insurance. I'm sure that the county attorney's heard of that, those two words. I think that's where the problem lies, not with y'all. The only thing y'all may have kind of screwed up on is you knew before you awarded the bids, this problem. And yet you still awarded the bid. I'm not happy with that scenario there.
Not interrupt, but did we know?
You knew before the bids were opened or awarded.
We did not have a protest, a formal protest prior to the bid.
You knew the problem existed.
I knew we had.
The information was not on North Florida's website.
Correct.
As it should have been. And you knew that before you awarded the bids, correct? Did you know before you awarded the bids?
I know that it went out by email and that it was not on North Florida's website. I know two out of the three responded.
Okay. That's not part of what.
And a qualified bidder was awarded the bid.
That's not part of the bid specifications, as Commissioner Stapleton pointed out. That's what people rely on. You've got to have a process. You worry about, you know, what's it going to do to the process? You don't have any choices, the way I see it. Without, if you go and do not follow that, contractor can't rely on what you're saying in the bid documents. The problem is North Florida. They didn't do their job. They should be held accountable.
I don't think anybody disagrees with you on that.
Do they have arrows in emissions insurance?
Well, I'm certain, I'm sure they do.
I think that they're the ones that ought to be holding the bag on this one.
But that's not the question before us tonight.
The process is, fairness is, in saving taxpayers the money. Now, if DOT is not willing to reevaluate and extend the deadline, then we might lose the grant. And I agree with everything y'all have said. But sometimes, you know, the interest of time doesn't always work in our favor.
It doesn't.
But in this particular case, you, you're going to bid, screw up the whole bid process. You've got it out there, and now, because whomever you contracted with, North Florida in this case, didn't do the job, then don't expect the taxpayers to have to pay for their screw-up. They're the subcontractor to the county. And I don't think, if you monkey with it now and you, you don't deny the protest and let them continue on, that no, it puts us behind the eight ball. You're going to have to rewrite your whole bid process and say, "Mr. Contractor, here's what we think you can do." But unless you're sitting in Mr. Harris's office or call him daily or meet him daily and ask, "Is there any changes?" And he's not going to know anyway, in most cases, because North Florida's the one doing the engineering. Hold them accountable for their screw-up. If they're not checking their website, or they did not put it on their website, I don't know what their technical problem was there, but it occurred. What's disturbing is, we knew it wasn't there, and sending out an informal email, unless it was specified in the bid documents, we can follow up with an email. Probably not a bad idea to do that, to cover the future. But I think there was an error made, even when you awarded the contract, when you knew that there was a problem, it should have been addressed at that time. It would have delayed things, but you wouldn't be sitting where you're sitting now. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my big mouth again, nerves and all. Charlene Moss, Wiggins Road, Live Oak, Florida. And I think it's been very good discussion, but I think sometimes we have to eat crow when we do something that's not exactly the way it should be. And I applaud all the questions and all the information that have come out. And I think, first of all, I want to give a shout-out to Anderson Columbia. They do excellent work. I've only been here since '04, but coming out 136A to hit 136, that's an excellent stretch. Every time I drive over there, I think how wonderful it feels and how good it looks and how durable that it will be. It has to be. And then I travel farther from where they ended, and there's a world of difference in what it feels like underneath when you're driving your car. And I think the process was flawed, and I don't think it's fair to either party, but I also agree with Bo Hancock on most of everything. I also agree with Bo Hancock on most everything that he said. I think the Florida Commission website is the one that is ultimately responsible, and they're the ones that you should be going to for the legal part of it. I don't know anything about legal, but it just seems to me that if they're the ones that hold the information to be disseminated, and that it's flawed, how can you be held responsible when you think that it's them done? How can they be held responsible when they don't get all their information? It's not fair there, it's not fair to the people that it was awarded to in flaw. Mr. Harris just said, when he was talking with Henderson, Mr. Henderson?
Richard.
That they knew before it was awarded that there was a problem, so there are reasons why that it wasn't done right, I don't know all of them, but from what I've heard, it just doesn't seem fair to either party, that, to me, the only way to correct it is to, and to expedite, trying to get the grant money, trying to get everything taken care of, and I agree with them, we should make, you should make a decision, if you can, tonight, to go forward and help, this is probably going to go to court anyway, one side or the other is going to be taking it to court. So just bite the bullet, say we goofed, it wasn't our fault, but we were a party to that, and we just need to try and cut off problems before they begin. If, if the email was done for the first time, and it wasn't the usual protocol, why should they be held responsible? They were the lowest bidder, and Mr. Stapleton is right, he's working for we, the citizens of Swanee County, saving us money is what it's all about. We spend far too much in bad ways sometimes, as it is.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Here none. The board have any further discussion?
I'm just looking up the, Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking up the agenda item, just to see what exactly was that I missed, so. Because it was just an authorization to award the bid.
Correct.
December 18th meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
What's your, what's your question in regards to that?
I'm just kind of holding the process up until I found it, that's all.
I mean.
Apologize.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe Mr. Tony or one of you guys can, what is the normal protocol like for you guys to know, obviously they would put it on the, the website here at North Florida, is that something that someone in your office checks daily to see if there's any change?
That's the last thing we check, on, like I said, on.
On, for instance, on, as I said earlier, on this bid, it turned in on Friday, that's the last thing we would check Friday, make sure we've got all the addenda, or different, different counties, cities, whatever, or some of them will cut, cut the addendums off two days before the bid date, a day, some of them will give you, well, can give you addendums right up to the.
Last minute.
Last minute.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, wherever, wherever the, the bidder, bidder instructions says it's going to be available, that's the last thing we do when we're preparing our final bid document.
Mr. Williams, one question for you, real quick. It said that you had responded to, or at least included the information for addendum number two, the second addendum, at least was in there.
First addendum.
Because the information that we got from, on that, in that December meeting from council was that you're, that you were non-responsive to addendum number three.
Two and three.
Two and three.
But that was not in your, in your email that's in the, the minutes?
The, the reason I directed my attention to addendum number three is because it is the one that had the pay item in it. Then the other was more informational, addendum number two, but item three actually had the pay item in it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say one more thing, and I've already kind of said, I know I'm just repeating myself, but I, I just don't see a win for us and for the people here, as far as saving money. Because I, I can just see this thing going both ways.
Anything else?
And I think with time being involved, I don't, I think we need to take time out of it, because regardless of which one, you know, may sue us, or, it's still going to be time consuming, so I just don't know if that's a, a big issue, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Fleming.
It's an issue that we have to sit here and sit on tonight, we got to move forward on this tonight, or can we have it, you know, like time, I know that December is the final completion. But as we sit and listen, and I'm just paying attention, there's a no-win situation for none of us, due to the fact that the error, you got the other bidders out there that, like I said, they're going to feel slighted or shorted, as well as Anderson is feeling, perhaps, but it don't make it no easier. There has to be a solution to what we are about to do. Probably going to cost some money, and it's going to extend out, and, and the road still ain't going to be done, completed. So, we, we are at a standstill, and I don't know how we go about getting it done.
And in another way, guys, I'm, or gentlemen, I'm, I'm not being disrespectful, please believe me, I don't know what would happen, if it come to the other contractor, but I, I can tell you, if this doesn't go our way, we're, we're going to proceed to court.
Right.
If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming, in regard to putting a decision off, other than tonight, our furied as section 17, item nine, says after filing the, after the filing, protest committee's decision and recommendation shall then be presented for action at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. At this time, protesters shall be allowed to present evidence and testimony to the Board of County Commissioners. At the conclusion of such testimony by the parties involved, other things, you know, go with it, the board shall by majority vote, accept or reject the decision and recommendation of the protest committee.
We got it.
In other words, tonight.
Well, anyone else have anything else to add?
What's the mile, what's the length of the road?
Same length it was before. Yeah, it's about, it's, that's about right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say, I, I have assumed that this thing was going to go before a judge.
I have too.
That's why I've tried my best to communicate as well as I could with Mr. Williams, and they've done a great job trying to help us move this thing through this process, but there just isn't a best decision, I don't think.
No.
That's my opinion, y'all might think different.
My opinion on it is that, you know, I, I believe it's unfair to Anderson, the situation they've been put in, I believe this, the next company that's been awarded the bid is an unfair situation for them, it's an unfair situation for the board to have to pick a winner or a loser in that situation. I mean, for me, I hate for it to have to go to court, but a completely unbiased judge can hear all the evidence and make a decision, if that's where it's going, if it doesn't wind up there, then so be it, but I just, I don't see a good scenario e- either way we go.
He still won't have a pay vote, vote paid.
You'll have your road paved.
It, it'll get paved.
It's going to get paved. I know there's a deadline, but it'll get paid.
Yes, sir.
With respect to our argument versus the argument that the second place bidder would have, and certainly I implore you to consult more with your county attorney about this, our argument is much better than theirs, quite bluntly. You have it in your bid documents, in multiple places, in your code, you can reject the bids, you, you have it within your authority to do that, and that is not an uncommon, it may be uncommon for the board, and I understand that, and I, again, I don't want to take away from the position you're in, but this happens quite, I don't want to say often, but it happens at the state level, and the process is to reject the bids and to rebid the project. If this were to proceed, if the board does not agree with us tonight, and we are forced to proceed to court, and that's the 100% guarantee, and I'm saying this with the utmost respect as well, we don't know what's going to happen with the second place bidder, if they were to protest, my humble legal opinion is, their argument isn't as good as ours. You've got these documents to rely on, we are relying on your documents in our case, and that gives us a stronger argument, so when you say we're going to end up in court either way, I don't know that that's necessarily true, and our position, of course, is that our argument is the one that should be considered here tonight, because it's the one that's in front of you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just simply want to say that it's a shame that we're going through this process, because, you know, we all know that DOT reimburses the amount of money that it costs for these roads to be, to be done, 100%, and the legal fees are not going to be reimbursed to us, so we're going to be out legal fees on, on dealing with this in court, one way or the other.
If we have legal fees, I would fully expect the board to direct a county attorney to look into the errors and emissions insurance in North Florida to cover that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Would I be wrong there?
I'm not going to give you my recommendation at this point.
I think you did. But the board has a decision tonight, if there's no further discussion, entertain somebody to make a motion.
I think I will throw it on, one last thing to the council, what, what do you recommend? I mean, we look to our attorney for this.
If you recall, I was on the protest committee.
He was on the protest committee, and they made a recommendation.
And they made, I made this recommendation.
And so, it's our decision tonight to either uphold their recommendation, or to.
Reject it.
Reject it.
That is the decision.
And if we reject it, then that would lead to us going back to bid.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion. Based on page one of the bid solicitation, paragraph three, says the Board of County Commissioners, we reserve the right to reject any and all bids, I ask that we do that, and we re-advertise and award the bid in the best, best interest of Swanee County.
If I might, Mr. Stapleton, what you need to add at the beginning of that would be to reject the committee's recommendation. That's what we would effectively be doing.
He made two motions, actions there, do we need one motion first?
Yes, sir, to, to either reject or.
You want to make a motion to reject the board's action.
Right.
To reject the recommendation of the committee.
So, your, your mo, Mr. Stapleton, you're making a motion to reject the protest committee's recommendation?
Yes.
I've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Stapleton, do I have a second? Hearing no second, motion dies for lack of a second. Do I have a motion to accept the protest committee's recommendation? There's not but two choices, fellas.
Either way, no.
I think the fire chief's going to bring us a fire suit to wear, deck of heat, because our butts are going to be in the hot here, regardless.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of the committee, and I do so begrudgingly.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson to accept the committee's recommendation, do I have a second? All right, back to discussion, I motioned out for lack of a second.
Let's, maybe we'll try the first one again?
Thank you, I would love to have a recess on that.
I would like to add something, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In all seriousness, oh, Mr. Harris, I think if, if you would clarify, I feel in all certainty that regardless of the timeframe, the road's going to get paved, we're going to get the grant money, and I feel certain that DOT is going to be willing to work with us through this process, do you agree with that or disagree? I agree with that. I just feel like that some on the board may be very concerned that we're going to lose grant money, and it's, I understand it's tough to make a decision.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, if I will, I'd like to speak to that, I'm not so much concerned about that, it's just, I want to be fair, to all parties involved, and I just, I'm on the fence, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, I want to be fair too, and I really, really, really want to be fair, but I don't think anyone on this board really wants to make this decision, we really would rather have somebody else make it, if I, if I could speak for the board, but it seems like that's what you want to do, because obviously no one wants to second either one of these motions, and these are only two options before us, so therefore, to me, the, the single best way to conserve time and everything else would be to send it to a judge, and let, and let a, someone who is not involved in this thing, let him make the decision, it's going to go to the judge anyway, you think about this, think about this, all right, we rebid, if we, if we agree to rebid, we're going to get protest, which is going to take how many days, 30 days probably to?
Well, we'll just go back through the same process we've gone through with Anderson Columbia.
And if we disagree with them, they're, they could very well take us to court, and let the court, we're out another 30, 45 days on the same process, and the judge is going to hear it anyway, and that's the only issue that, that, if they're going to hear it anyway.
I tend to agree with him, because we, we're here to make a decision, and it's not our expertise, we can make a decision on this based on our feelings, and what we're reading, and how we feel, maybe someone can get a fair shake.
And I think that's, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, what you are here to do is to look at the report and look at what's happening here.
Yeah.
And what's happened in this process, I think Mr. Cheshire alluded to that, you know, as well, what may happen down the road, we can speculate, and as lawyers, we deal with possibilities more often than we do probabilities, and anything is possible, and not to be speculating on, you know, what may happen in the future, but to look at the process that you have before, before you, here today, and, and judge your actions based on what has happened up to and including, you know, the, the hearing here this evening, I mean, the presentation here this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Only thing I'd add to it is, based on testimony that Anderson's given, we know where it's going, it's going to court, now, based on what another company's going to do, that's assuming at this point, so, for what it's worth.
Thanks, sir. Any other motions, or?
You want to take, you want to take that break and let everybody mull it over?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like a break, I got a, my mind, my mind's on fire.
I will remind, I will remind, I will remind everybody up here.
What were we discussing?
Where were we? You got to go all through it again.
No. Everybody ready?
No.
Mr. John? Yeah, I'm ready, sir. I'm sorry. You're okay? We, thank you, sir. We just, we'll wait on him, we understand. Thanks, sir, you all right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, good, can we start now? Okay. I know, we forgive him.
I will pick right back up where we left off.
Make a motion, we take a break?
I like that.
Second. Didn't mean picking off with the break, but right back to where we were before we took the break. Fellas, we got to make a decision one way or the other. We've had the only two motions made and no second. So, I mean, if anybody's rethought their decision or entertained either one of the motions, don't all jump out there at once.
I'll make another. Mr. Chairman.
Before you make the motion, if you don't mind, again, I just don't think there's a win-win answer here. I think it puts the board in a very, in a way, dangerous situation to be making these kind of decisions, but because it could go either way against us and for the people, as Mr. Bo got up here and spoke to. That's all I got to say?
Thanks, sir.
I'm just confused, that's all.
You have a motion to make? Same one?
I make a motion that we reject the committee's decision.
We got a motion by Commissioner Stapleton to reject the protest committee's decision. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I guess just maybe five minutes of some more discussion, just five minutes. I do that in regard for a little discussion at this time, if I may.
So you're making a second for discussion?
Yes, sir.
Have a second for discussion? Yes, sir.
I know that, you know, we want to make the right decision and do the right thing. And I know Anderson, you know, as previously was stated, that they have done a very good job, that's all I've mainly known with Anderson, 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 you know, doing paving. And it takes great heart, and you got to have confidence to come and stand for that podium and state your case, your protest. I'm quite sure that they'll probably be, the other side will probably do the same thing, that remain to be seen. It may be a hasty decision, but I'm going to second this motion, Commissioner Stapleton, for the sake of trying to do what's good and right for the county and for everybody where everybody would benefit. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm second.
Okay, so we got a motion to reject, and a second by Mr. Fleming. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, you know, I think we all are fighting with this decision because it's almost 50-50. We don't figure out where we're going to go with this thing. You know, there's a fairness issue, there's a time issue, there's all kinds of things. And I think I was making, I made the motion based upon, before, based upon my belief that, that it sounds like something that needs to go before somebody who needs to make this decision, somebody else. But I will have to admit that there's a large part of me that agrees, I've said this, agrees with these guys. I really do agree with you guys on, in principle and everything.
I want my road paved.
That's just what I want, I want my road paved. But I can't sell out my, I don't think I can sell out my conscience for a road. So, Mr. Stapleton, I'm going to agree with you on this one.
All right, any other discussion? I have a motion by Commissioner Stapleton to reject the bids, a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Passes three to, three, two.
Mr. Hill.
Me and Mr. Hill were descending votes. All right, that's settled. Moving on to item 15, discuss what possible.
Mr. Chairman, do we not want to order?
You rejected the committee's recommendation.
Yes, are we advertising, are going back out to bid tonight?
That was just to reject, we have to
Are you going to make a motion to do that, to authorize?
Re-advertise.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to re-advertise bid.
Well, okay, you need to include then a rescission of the previous award.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind the previous award and that we re-advertise the bid.
Thank you.
Do you need it in one motion?
That's fine.
That's fine. All right, you got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Now, you need the bid to re-advertise?
No.
No, it was included, it was included, never mind. We can go on to the next item?
Yes, sir.
Discuss what possible award action, information made available on the county website. County Attorney, Jimmy Fatt, Randy Harris, Administrator presenting.
Harris.
I have spoken about this issue a couple of times previously, very briefly, and I want to be brief tonight. There's a legal issue that's circulating through the entire country over information that's made available on websites, commercial websites, government websites, and unfortunately, the technology doesn't exist to correct the problem that is part of the legal issue. So we've been notified, and at this time, what I would ask the board is that you authorize staff, and this affects the clerk's office as well, not just the county commission's website, but I'd ask that you authorize us to simply put the minimum amount of information on the website that has to be on there until such time that either something changes in the legal arena or technology exists to allow us to come back and place more information on there than we're otherwise required to place on there.
Any questions from Mr. Harris?
I don't have any.
Your wishes of the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, this is an issue where we're responsible for all the content on our website, no matter what.
Yeah.
And so
Right now, all we need on there is what we are required by law to have.
Yes. They're going to take our pictures off.
Have you seen the one they have of you? You'd be glad they did.
Yeah, I bet. That's probably what the problem is. Some kind of virus in there.
Oh, no. I got a motion by Mr. Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, discuss what possible board action, any issues associated with water or the wastewater plan at I-75 and 136. Got anything for us, Mr. Harris?
No.
Do we have any additional agenda items? I didn't see any.
I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And you might, if you want to entertain this as an additional item, since Mr. Williams and Mr. Cheshire are still here, if we do end up, because our procurement policy doesn't speak to this, if we begin the bid process and we have a bid protest that is brought to the county, do you want us to put a hold on the bid process at that point in order to take that bid protest through the process?
Some questions.
How do you want to handle that?
What would be a good way to handle that, Mr. Attorney?
Well, I think that, I think it's implied in there that we would hold it, hold the rebid during that period of time.
So, in question, Mr. Chairman, in, so in rejecting the bid at this point and rescinding the award, they could, they could stop us from the process of rebidding just to protest the recension?
Yeah, you just took a job from them.
I know, I just, that's what I'm asking. So everything halts until we get a clarification from them. How long do they have to rescind?
Well, I would go ahead, no, my plan is to go ahead and start putting the bid package back out there. That's my plan.
Yep.
But in anticipation of a possible protest, I just need for the board to decide how you want us to handle that. If it is to put a hold on it at that point and wait until it goes through the process, I just need to know.
Mr. Chairman, probably, seeing what we've gone through here, I would lean more towards put a hold on it so we can go ahead and get ahead of it and
If a protest comes.
Right.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. I mean, because if we wait until the end, we're going to be back to where we are.
Yeah, because my plan is to go ahead and put it back out on the streets right away and start the bid process. But I need to ensure that if we get a protest, that
Once you start the protest, I mean, once you start the process, there's no way to stop it, once the bids go out.
Yeah, there is. You send an addendum out and call Tony and say, Tony, there's an addendum out.
Now, I mean, is it a standard three-day period, 72 hours that they got to file protests?
Well, we'll post what's happened here on DemandStar, and they have a 72-hour period from there.
So that is their notification, DemandStar, that's what this requires?
It doesn't say
There are time limits.
Yeah, well, it's 72 hours is what appears as a timeline in there for the protest. But it doesn't say specifically, post it on DemandStar, because only the bid tabulation is required under our particular procedures to be posted on DemandStar. But if you put the results on there, which is the same as what a bid tabulation would be, you post it on DemandStar, and then I would specifically notify them, you know, of the result right then, to be able to get the 72 hours running.
I'm more comfortable with that. I mean, I'm fine with it going on BidStar, but they deserve to be notified in person or by phone call or something.
Which we had done already before, and we indicated that we would immediately notify them of the result.
Okay.
So is that still, is it 72 hours once they're notified?
Yes, sir.
So you'll know within 72 hours.
Mr. Chairman. So put the bid packet together and hold it for 72 hours? Is that what we're going to do?
Well, we had indicated before, we put a hold on the contract, that we would notify them of the decision of the board when it came to the board.
Correct.
So they're expecting that. Now, we can do that tomorrow. If they don't file a protest within 72 hours, we know, we just continue.
There had to be more than just a phone call, had to be a legal notification, where they, we have receipt of their, of a notice?
We can send something to them overnight in writing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Got a question for council. They were notified that we had a bid protest?
Yes, sir. Of this current one, yes, sir.
That's happening right now?
Yes, sir.
So they chose not to have any representative from their company here? They was notified ahead of time, I'm saying.
Well, they're really not an aggrieved party because, you know, they're the ones that were awarded the contract, so there would be no reason for them to be. By rescinding the action and putting it out for rebid, they potentially are now an aggrieved party. And so
I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello. Are y'all just okay with, let's notify them, wait to 72 hours and then
Yes, sir.
let the project?
I'm good.
Yes. That's good.
We don't need to take any action on that, do we?
And if we have a protest, then we just hold off?
Yes.
On letting, okay.
Yes, sir. Just hold off. I would assume that would be the wishes of the board. Any other questions on it?
No. I just didn't want to be having to make that decision. I'd rather you made the decision.
After tonight, are you sure we can?
All right, no more, okay, no additions, no additions. Public comments and concerns, anybody wishing to speak?
Bo Hancock, Wiggins Road, Swanee County. Are y'all going to change your, the bid procedures now? Y'all need to be thinking about this, so you've already dug a hole, let's dig it.
I would say that we're probably a little bit ahead of you on that. Yes, sir.
Because if you don't do that, you're going to keep doing this, because, you know, you got to kind of cover your heiny a little bit. But if you don't change it, if you want to put emails in, that's great, but it's got to be part of the bid package. And then you got them. If y'all hadn't said nothing about that.
That wasn't on the agenda to discuss tonight. It was all about making one decision that took an hour.
I ain't going to say nothing. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Going once. Come on, I knew you had one or two.
I just want to, Charlene Moss, Wiggins Road, Live, Florida. I just want to compliment all of you. I think you've done excellent as far as working your brain to a frazzle.
Thank you.
But we appreciate the fact that you do take the leadership role and that you are serious about it. We appreciate it. And I'm with Clyde, Mr. Fleming. I think the good Lord above is helping to direct all of our paths, and I appreciate that, the fact that he mentioned it.
What?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I hear none. Going to board members' requests and comments. Mr. Richardson, do you have anything?
Yeah, I attended my first safety meeting ever with DOT today with Commissioner Fleming, and I was impressed and discouraged at the same time. But I was informed, and I think that's the most important thing. It's amazing how much we got to work on, on safety issues in our county, and I appreciate the sheriff working to improve our roads and improve our safety on our roads. We still rank pretty high up there among small counties with some, with some issues and traffic, and I know you're working to do it, so I appreciate all that you're doing, and love to sit down and talk with you about some other areas that we probably could improve in. And that's all.
Mr. Fleming?
I wasn't going to say anything, but Mr. Richardson, they were talking about at the last meeting that I attended, as far as I had the commission meeting, that somewhere near the summer, we're going to be in a difficult situation with the new rail, with the rail coming, CSX tearing up the rail, and they said it'd be how many days? Two weeks? Two weeks?
Ten days.
Ten days. And Sheriff, you're going to have your hand for redirecting, redirecting traffic. They know it's going to be a major issue somewhere about midsummer, they're going to have 129 tore up. And they know it's going to be bad. They stress that.
Couldn't get them to build a bridge either, you know.
They made that statement very strong.
Anything else, Mr. Fleming?
That's it.
Parade?
Huh?
Parade?
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes, yes. On Monday, with the commissions, we usually embark on the MLK parade, and commissioners have agreed to participate. I have to get the correct time, Commissioner Hill.
Sure.
I think the lineup is 9:30 or 10:00, somewhere between.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Hill?
I'd just like to say, I think tonight was one of the hardest meetings I've ever had, or one of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make, thanks to you guys, but I can appreciate your stance on it. I can appreciate your stance on it. I wanna say I appreciate our staff and our board. I appreciate all you guys being professional. We had great conversation, and in the end, we came up with an answer, whether we all agreed or disagreed, but I just appreciate you guys. I enjoy working with you all, and, again, just shows you what kind of integrity we have on this board and where we are. Thank you to everybody. That's all I got to say.
Yeah, I'll add to that. I think the decision was a rather split decision, but it was looking at it, I think, looking at the same thing from just two different sides. The integrity of the bid process is what everybody wanted to uphold, and there was just two different ways that I think was looking at.
Going about it, yep.
You have one company that was slighted, so to speak, in the process, and one company that responded to everything, so I don't think it's by either one of the company's own fault. It's not.
No.
It wasn't by this board's fault, it was by a secondhand vendor, and it put us in a bad situation, but in the past, the board's been good about working through these problems and moving on and continue to work for the betterment of Swanee County, and, you know, it's one decision, and I think the board will continue to work for. I just wanna, it bothered me a little bit, soon as it came out of my mouth, so I'll just go ahead and apologize to Mr. Stapleton for cutting you off when you tried to say something while I was speaking. It came out a little harsh, and I didn't mean for it to come out that way, so I did wanna offer that apology publicly since I cut you off publicly, but I didn't have anything else other than that, and if you don't have any other comments, Mr. Hill, I'll.
I'll just say, and thank you to the community and the concern that you guys have in voicing your opinion, because it goes a long way in helping us make our decision.
Yeah, and there was questions about no one prior to whether this, that there was a problem, and there was, but from the very beginning, it was looked at as there was a bid, and the whole time, it was how to best uphold the integrity of the bid process, and that was the decision that we made, and we moved forward with it. The process went through, and this is why there is a process in place. The company filed a protest, and they were successful in their protest. Nevertheless, that is the direction and the decision that was made. You may disagree with the decision, but when we sat down and looked at all the evidence and everything that was presented to us at the time, that was the way we decided to go. Some of you may think it was not much consideration taken about it, but when we all sat down and looked at it, we seen a no-win situation, either way we were gonna go with it. So, there was a lot of discussion prior to it, and, you know, that's what led to tonight. And if, I don't really have anything else to say about it, but, Mr. Stapleton, do you have any comments for us?
Is it okay if I speak?
It is now.
No, in all seriousness, I don't leave here tonight thinking I got a win, trust me. It's one thing about this board that I appreciate each one of you, is to work through the difficult things. The county is in a terrible situation right here, and, you know, it's, it took us two hours to figure out what we think we should've done, so I just, I appreciate each of you, I appreciate the process, I appreciate the community being involved and their input, and at the end of the day, every commissioner up here, as far as I'm concerned, they're gonna do what's right for Swanee County, and that's what it's about. It's not about easy decisions, it's about what's right. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. I just, I had somebody call me, I've actually had a couple complaints about this, and I just, I told them that I would bring it up to the board. Y'all know my stance on passing ordinances, especially ordinances that aren't gonna be enforced, but I said I'd bring it up, so I'm gonna bring it up. But I've had several complaints about panhandlers and the harassment of panhandlers at the interstate in the Walmart area, and I got asked about an ordinance, and I said that I would bring it up for the board to discuss, batter around, or consider, so that's what I'm doing. I don't expect y'all to give me any feedback on it tonight. If you have any, great. If not, we'll maybe discuss it at a different board meeting, but if y'all do tonight, I mean, any quick thoughts?
What type of ordinance are you talking about?
I'm not advocating for it, I mean.
No, I'm just asking about what type of, what type of language are you specifically speaking of to, I mean, are they asking, or is your?
Just their simple request was to ban it.
To ban it?
Panhandle, yes, sir.
I don't think you can do that.
I can't either.
This has been tested several times.
I said I'd bring it up, I'm bringing it up for feedback from council.
I just asked them to go across the road and stay in District Four.
To be honest with you, it is working, that's for most of them, right?
I'm about ready to get out of here.
That's for most of them, right?
I agree with your concerns, it's concern, it is, and I think it's worth discussion, and I don't know what we can or can't do at this time, but I would certainly entertain it.
I mean, I'll give, my thoughts on it were, was, you know, the enforcement side, the same thing with any ordinance we pass is whether or not we can enforce it or not, and that's an extra burden for us, extra burden for the Sheriff's Department, but I thought I'd bring it up.
Did you guys say we did have something, or I heard someone, I think we had something?
And it got cleared off.
So, we had nothing?
There's, there's things that can be done, but I don't wanna go into all of it, it's, and I haven't reviewed it in a while, but, I mean, you cannot ban it, but there are certain requirements that you have to go through to be able to do it, so I'll just leave it at that until I have a chance to review it.
Okay.
You have to tell them to pull permit.
An occupation, well, the county does not have.
I know, I'm messing with you. I'm messing with you. I don't really go out past.
We gotta find a way to fix the problem and not.
There's no way to fix, I kinda told them that and expressed to them my concerns about enforcement, but I still, they asked me to bring it up, I said I'd bring it up.
Help people.
All right, if no one else has anything, did you have any comments, Mr. Harris? I don't know if I skipped over you or not.
Yes, sir, I've got a list here.
Everybody else does too, go ahead.
But I'll go ahead and just hold it till the next meeting.
Thanks, sir. With nothing else, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
They were quick with that one, weren't they?
You see who made it.